All right, I'd like to call this caucus session in order here, please. If you all have received the agenda for tonight's, and I guess we do have a presentation that we need to accomplish as well. It's not on the agenda. Yeah, we'll do it. We'll call the order and pledge allegiance now. We'll have the chief of the board give any background.
I think they would give the best background.
Okay. So we'll have, call the order of the pledge and then roll call and then we'll do the presentation. Okay? Everyone stand for the pledge, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Patty, take your role up, please.
Mr. Duffett?
Yes.
Mr. Morvay?
Yes.
Mr. Neff?
Here.
Mrs. Oliver?
Here.
Mr. Tisch?
I guess we have six items on the agenda for this evening, and if it's okay with council, I'd like to do that with one reading, if there's not any objections to that. At this time, I'd call on Mayor Duffett, please.
I'd like to call whoever's here from First Responders Inc. to come up, please. First responders provide supplies and necessary things for our safety forces, and they significantly have helped our forces here in Canfield. So I have a mayor proclamation at this time that I'd like to share. Whereas First Responders First Inc. being established in January 2015 is a nonprofit corporation focused on keeping first responders safe as they do their jobs. And whereas First Responders First Inc. focuses on raising public awareness of roadway and occupational safety, as well as ensuring first responders have proper safety equipment, training, and equipment. And whereas First Responders First Inc. operations are funded solely by various fundraisers and donations. And whereas First Responders First Inc. donates services for training, as well as equipment, to local schools, fire department, and police department within the tri-county area. And whereas First Responders First Inc. has donated opioid protection kits for cruisers specifically to the Canfield Police Department. Whereas First Responders First Inc. has donated tourniquets and bleeding control compression dressings specifically to the Canfield Police Department to be used during a mass casualty or active shooter situation. Now therefore, I, Richard A. Duffett, Mayor of the City of Canfield, State of Ohio, do hereby declare and designate May 2nd, 2018, as First Responders First Day in the City of Canfield. Hereafter, you set my hand in a witness thereof, I cause to seal the City of Canfield to be affixed. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Chief. As the mayor was saying, we are a nonprofit organization, and we work with local agencies to help them acquire the equipment that they need. On top of the equipment that we provided for the Canfield Police Department, we're also going to be doing training with them in the future to help them with bleeding control in the event they have to go into these situations, and hopefully they don't have to, but in the event they have to deploy these items. So we thank everybody who's helped us in our donations and our fundraising, and we're privileged to be able to donate to the Canfield Police Department. And again, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much.
Thanks a lot. We all have received a copy of the minutes from the last meeting, and I would ask if there was any corrections or questions about those minutes. There are none, those minutes will stand as written. Reading of communications, Mr. Neff.
I just want to correct on the minutes. It says red truck was bread truck. It's a white truck in the minutes for the complaint. Last week, the flat tire truck that is unlicensed has been sitting out in the horses. I'm going to keep bringing it up, it's my job, so. So I was going to talk about a meeting we had regarding planning, but maybe I'll wait until we have community reports on that. I did have a resident send emails about a sewage problem she had after the city was working on the sewer lines in front of her house, and the next day sewage backed up and she experienced about $12,000 worth of damage. So I'd like, well, I guess be talking to Wade about that. I've already talked to a couple people, but see.
Well, yeah, I mean, have the resident communicate directly with the residents, definitely resolve it every two weeks.
Okay, all right, thank you, that's all.
Okay, Mayor Duffett?
Would it be a good time to say anything about McDonald's?
Sure.
Probably during the campaign, around that time, as I went around neighborhoods, talked about various things that people need in camp, and I'm sure we've all talked about it here on council. But one of the things that came up all the time was McDonald's. You guys going to do anything about McDonald's? So Seth, Wade and I talked about it, so we started a communication with them, and first phase of it was trying to get the local ownership to put lights on. As you saw, it was like a Christmas tree somewhere off, somewhere on, right when you come into Canfield. So we were able to get that done, and couldn't get much else done. Well, then we learned through the corporate McDonald's that there was a new owner in town, and it was from Akron, and immediately contacted him, and that led to a string of conversations, texting, or mostly emails, and it's been back and forth, back and forth, trying to tell them a little bit about camp, though of course they knew where it was, but I think this gentleman owns a string of, a chain of McDonald's, and he's a new owner, and he's getting into this market. So naturally, you know, our recommendations were, we need to level the thing and get a new McDonald's, and resize the parking lot, for all the various reasons that I won't go into now, but that was our recommendation. But just yesterday, the communication that I received is that they are going to do just that. They're going to level McDonald's, we're going to get a new, modern McDonald's, you know, it could happen sometime between August of 2018, could go into '19. But that's official from the corporate, that's official from the new ownership, and they want to get involved with this community, and they're going to be meeting, coming to our Memorial Day kickoff. They do want a veteran parking sign, they do want to get involved with, on the green, and of course I suggested the Canfield alumni till open too, it's just another way, but they want to get involved, and I think this is a good sign, and we're fortunate that it's new ownership. I think that was the thing, new ownership and fresh. And so I asked them, Wade and I were wondering if they were going to announce it, if we could announce it, if they wanted to do a joint thing. He says, no, go ahead. So this is officially announcing that there will be a new McDonald's in Canfield, and it's not going to be an upgrade, it's going to be a rebuild, so.
Oh, we need now the Sonic and a.
Check for light. Right. Now I can buy two eggplant muffins instead of one. Mrs. Oliver?
I don't have anything.
Okay, so I just, if there's any update on Hickory Hollow?
Well, I can advise you that the court denied the city's motion for summary judgment yesterday, or two days ago, which I had anticipated, and I think I told everybody that, so that case is set for trial in early June.
So that, it'll be set for early June, like June 5th or something like that?
Right.
Okay. And is that open to the public, then, or?
Yeah, for a rule.
Okay, great. I think it would be in our best interest if we had citizens that are being affected by this, like this property there at that hearing, so the judge could see and hear some comments, maybe of the citizens that have to live around that. So if you'd keep us abreast of that date, we'd appreciate it. I've seen activity up there on Kirk, Mike. I see trucks there, construction. I'm hoping that it's.
The garage is painted in the back. The steps, he has no permit, never answered any letter I sent him, sent him regular mail. He has not answered that, he's been cited in the mayor's court. Tentatively, I think it's the 21st of the month, he should be in the mayor's court.
Mayor, you'll handle that, then?
Absolutely.
All right, thank you.
And I want to commend Mike for all the documentation that he provides, as we've been getting tougher on enforcing. The documentation is great, so that really helps the judgment.
And your weight truck is still there on the corner, right? Mr. Neff?
Okay. Wade, we talked with the fellow that Bruce brought in, what was his name, Mark, from, he's a business, special, business from Town Center Associates in Beaver?
Had some really great ideas, this is what he does for a living, he helps cities design efficient cities. So what do you want the city to look like? Where do you want retail to be? Where do you want offices to be? Where's the, where do you get the most out of your property that you have and the resources that you have? Very interesting guy. He had brought up a point about this international building code. Have you had a chance to look at that yet, to see how that compared with our building code, Wade?
I have not. I know there's, the international building code, just from my experience in Texas, is a very extensive, comprehensive, covers pretty much everything zoning related, building related, so we'd almost have to do a thorough review and comparison to see if that works in Canfield, and how many potentially businesses or homes we would put out of compliance with the, I think the most recent version is the 2015, and IBC, which is the international building code, and that has substantially updated a lot of fire requirements, plumbing requirements, electrical requirements, so that's something that we would have to dedicate substantial amount of time to do a thorough review, both probably myself, Mark, and Mike would all be involved with that.
Yeah, I'd be curious just to see how that aligns with, you know, with the, anyway. Christine, electronic filing, you're working on that?
For income tax?
Yes.
Now that's several years out. Our problem is that you have to submit W-2s and your copy of your 1040, and so we would need some kind of a system that we could attach all of that along with the filing, because nobody would be compliant in electronically filing their tax return and then mailing the W-2s and 1040s.
Yeah.
I've worked with Mits, who's our software provider on that. They're working on their end from the software side of the provider of getting things put in place, but there's still.
They're just, yeah, they're just starting to work on a model.
Some hurdles to kind of address as we progress along with them, because it's something I think Vicki and Chris have done a good job of staying on top of.
Yeah, just the time of the season.
Yeah.
Taxi, I've gotten, I've gotten probably, probably nine, 10 requests, you know, for my time filing, so.
The state won't share information with us, the state or the federal government won't share that information, so you have to provide that along with your return to the city, so that's really where our problem lies.
Yeah, I understand. I just need something to tell people. So, you know, we have a new city manager, I've talked to Joe LaCicero, and he's agreed to help maybe put a town meeting together, so it'll be like twofold, come and meet our new city manager, Wade, get to know him, and also give like a state of the union about, you know, what's going on in Canfield. And so Joe and I are working on that, we haven't set a date yet, but more to come on that. Christine?
The income tax returns are posted through April 18th. She's still working on several large deposit days, where we had multiple deposits, and getting all those posted, and then she has a lot of work ahead of her in matching up the people who were missing documents that we've sent out letters, and they have mailed it, so then she's going to match it with the tax return that we already have. I should have the capital assets section completed for, in the next few days for the annual report, and today I received an email from the auditor of state's office that they will be here Tuesday to start our audit for 2017, and they will probably be here in three to four weeks.
Great, great. But it always turns out fantastic that you do a great job, so. Michael?
For the month of April, we issued 27 permits for a total valuation of $91,490. Last week, we talked about a mobile food truck ordinance, and you mentioned the businesses on West Main. I visited a few of them, they would entertain a mobile food truck in their parking lot for lunchtime only, so pass it along to Mark, and Mark's presently working on that.
Okay, and I kind of got out of order here a little bit, so I'll just go back. This is reports of committees, board, city manager, finance, chief of police, and zoning inspector. We've heard from Christine and Mike, and so I'll go back here to Mr. Neff, and reports on your committee, or anything you want to share with us there.
Phil Rodbusch is in the audience, a member of the planning and zoning. We had a good meeting, a small agenda, but a good meeting, last meeting, and we have another one tomorrow night, and we're specifically going to be discussing at length this Town Center Associates discussion. Wayne has prompted us to, you know, to involve him as much as possible. They're working, he and the mayor are working with the Chamber of Commerce, so we don't want to do double duty, but one of the very important things we feel is to have a plan for the downtown, otherwise we're going to end up with, our city is going to be just an office complex. And to be vibrant, we need retail, we need entertainment, we want it to be like it used to be, well, not necessarily like it used to be, but continue to develop in a vibrancy, so people are drawn to downtown. So we only have so much land right around the green, and one of the things that this one company has told us that we should do is take an inventory, and then map that inventory as to what of it is offices, what is eating establishments, and so forth, so it looks interesting. We're going to take a close look at that. I understand that, you know, there's still progress from the township on developing the jet, so, you know, planning and zoning wants to discuss what, you know, we would like to see going out there, so that's going to be on our agenda as well.
Great, great. Mayor Duffett?
I'm not.
Mrs. Oliver?
Our meeting's until next week.
The fire district, nothing really new to report. We did buy a third ambulance, it will be manned, we'll have an ambulance at every station, and so again, you know, this is our concern with response times, with training, professional care of our citizens in Canfield here, and so our guys still continue to do a fantastic job of providing safety services for us, so. That's about it for the fire district. And so Wade, I'm going to go back to you, because you can give us your report and plus the, your city report.
Okay, yeah, I'll give you a couple pieces of communication, and then I'll give a public works and city manager's report.
Okay.
So just a reminder to everybody, the Canfield Rotary Club annually sponsors Civic Day, which allows Canfield high school students to attend and participate in mock township council and school board meetings. That's going to take place this rotting, May the 4th. Patty has done a fantastic job preparing the agenda for that, as well as we've got some fun reports for the kids that are participating in that. I believe it's juniors and seniors in the high school social studies or service classes that get to play the role of all the council members and then, as well as staff. So it's a good event for the community. They'll be scheduled here at City Hall, I believe at 9:00, 10:30? Okay. So they start with the school board, they come to City Hall, and then I believe they go to the township, and there's a luncheon afterwards. So a great event, and again, Canfield Rotary, as one of our local organizations, does a fantastic job supporting the community and doing a lot of good within our community. Secondly, speaking of the township, they had a public hearing on the jet overlay district that they're proposing for the Millennial Moments property. The developer was in attendance and informed the audience that the property has been closed on. It's owned by the property owner now, the developer owns the property, and now it's just waiting for the township to vote on the jet overlay district. That's going to take place at their May 21st meeting. Once that vote takes place, they will then take the vote on the jet agreement, which then, after they take their vote on the jet agreement, we will very shortly take our vote on the jet agreement, depending on the outcome of those votes, move forward or seek other alternatives for the jet property, as well as the Red Gate Farm manstation. Third, just like to mention, so Mayor Duffett and I have been working closely with Mike Kavitsa with our Local American Legion. If you recall, approximately, what, March, we did a veteran sign resolution to dedicate a parking space here at City Hall, specifically for veterans. We're planning a ceremony to take place here at City Hall, City Hall on May 25th at 2:00 PM. We're working, we're meeting long Friday with Mr. Kavitsa to work out a lot of the details. We're, Mayor and Duffett and I are hopeful that it's going to be a nice event, much like, again, the female veterans' bridge dedication that they had in Austintown. We'd like to, you know, kind of go along with that and show that, you know, the City of Canfield and Canfield Township and the community are also very supportive of veterans, so we're really excited for the event that we've got planning, obviously leaving in Memorial Day, which again, we have our City of Canfield Memorial Day parade, which is always a great event for the community. And then lastly, for communications, I don't know how many of y'all are on it or know about, so the Next Door social media app, it's basically Facebook for neighborhoods. We have now, as the City of Canfield, joined on as the, as organization, just to use as another communication tool within the community. Usually it's used for garage sales, neighborhood issues, if, you know, somebody loses a dog, they kind of post it on there. It's kind of, it's a very useful tool amongst neighbors to be a part of that. The City of Canfield is now joined on as an organization to, again, just mass communicate to as many people as we can in all forms of media. As far as my report, so there's a few items. I'll start with public works. Outside of the normal daily, weekly activities, they rebuilding storm basins, jetting storm sewers, checking sanitary, flushing hydrants. They planted a tree at Hilltop Elementary as part of the Arbor Day celebration that Mayor Duffett took place in. It was very well attended, I think it was a great presentation to the kids, and they were very engaged, so Mayor Duffett did a fantastic job there, so I got to give him a little bit of an ad away. We also have summer help interviews taking place this week, so typically we bring in summer help during the grass mowing season to alleviate some of the guys to work on some of those more substantial projects, repairing storm sewers, fixing storm basins, and filling sinkholes, and a lot of the activity that we could not do during the winter time. We know summertime, they end up mowing a lot of grass, so we can bring in summer help. We've conducted two interviews, Chief Calucci as our HR director, myself, and Anthony Snowback, our public works coordinator, had two interviews on Tuesday. We have two more scheduled tomorrow afternoon. We're hopeful that of those four candidates, we only need to have two selected. We have a repeat candidate from last year that has also shown interest in summer help, worked out for us last year, so Tony said that, you know, we'll bring him back on board. Also, we have our civil service exam taking place next Wednesday, May the 9th, for our public works labor. A position listed the civil service exam for that. The cutoff for the exam was today at noon. We have 11 total applications and people taking that civil service exam. As you recall, in the budget, we had approximately probably half a year, we anticipated that we could bring a public works employee on, so we're still working towards that goal. Well, Tony, myself, and Chief Calucci will kind of sit down and evaluate, obviously, the candidates after that, and determine what best fits the organization for public works. So moving into the city manager's report, as I mentioned, we're currently working through a few updating of agreements, one with the school district and the township for our SRO, the implementation of the two SROs into this school, as well as, we've had conversations with President Morve and the fire district representatives, as well as Chief Hutchinson, to relook at the fire district agreements that we have in place and update them from, they were perpetual agreements that were from 1996 and 98 respectively, so we just went in and changed some verbiage on that, so that we should see that legislation coming in front of you here within the next month or so. As far as tonight's meeting, okay, so OPEC HC update, we have confirmation from New Perspective Asset Management, who was then tasked with processing all our claims. They have processed approximately 2 million outstanding claims, and things are progressing nicely. They send out weekly emails that we're, Christine and I, and I believe probably Chuck, and some other members of the organization that are on the email stream are getting updates on, so we're hopeful that that then will kind of play out, and employees have taken the proper steps to submit all the documentation they need to get their outstanding healthcare claims resolved.
Yeah, one time, Wade, they wanted us to send like $65,000.
Yeah, so, no, it was 180, or 165,000 dollars. So the communication from two weeks ago was the evaluation process of getting the claims essentially resolved, and they're in mass negotiations with all of the healthcare providers and set only claims, almost like a bankruptcy attorney would. To this date, we have not been communicated that there are any additional payments required from the City of Canfield. If there are, we will bring that as new legislation. The motion or the authorization that was made in January is kind of null and void at this point, because it was a payment to OPEC HC. OPEC HC is no longer in existence, so anything we would do or be required to do, we would bring back in front of the board. So as far as tonight goes, we have four ordinances, a resolution and a motion. The four ordinances, once we address them on the agenda, we can talk in more detail. But at high level, we have a fee schedule ordinance establishing a fee for behives, which the regulation was passed last year, I believe. As far as regulating behives, we just now need to set a fee associated with that. We're also surplusing and authorizing the disposal of some equipment and vehicles, and in conjunction with that, we're also purchasing public works equipment and police vehicles. We have a resolution supporting state and US bike trails. It's just a support resolution that ODOT needs to move forward with designating specific areas in the state of Ohio as US bicycle routes and national bicycle routes. And then the motion finally will just be moving, or actually setting the dates for our July and August meetings. We typically only have one meeting in July and August, so the motion will actually set those dates. And that's all I have.
Okay, I'm going to ask Chief Calucci for his report.
So we've been talking about scams quite a bit, and I think, what, in the last year or beginning of this year, we did a series of 11 or so scams, the most common scams that have been out there, and even though we do everything we can to communicate it, we're not going to reach everybody, we still have residents that are fallen victims of these scams. We had a resident that thought they were contacted by the IRS, and this person got away with just under $10,000 of a scam fraud that we're currently investigating. So as we always have spoken about it in the past, they're not going to contact you that way, hang up, don't talk to them. Another scam that's been going on a lot lately, and I don't think we talked about this, was Craigslist scams. There's a lot of, quite a few people utilize Craigslist to sell belongings or buy belongings. I recently was selling something on Craigslist personally, and so one of the scams that my resident has fallen victim to was they're going to tell you that they're interested, they want to buy this, we'll use my couch as an example, they want to buy your couch. And they'll tell you that, okay, we're going to get you a check, we're going to make it for higher than the amount that you want, so if you're asking 150, they might write the check for 500, and they'll just want you to give them the cash back. Well, to most of us, that doesn't sound right, doesn't make sense, but people are falling victim to it. We just had somebody fall victim to it. And one of the things that I noticed specifically on my list was somebody was interested in this couch, and they told me, is it in good condition, was it a smoke-free home, legitimate questions? And I said, yes, they're like, okay, consider it sold, all they need you to do is cash this check, and I said, get lost. And so I was, you know, something like along those lines, I told them to get lost, but one of the things I noticed were grammatical errors. Typically, a lot of these people are foreign, you know, they don't speak our language, so their sentence. So their sentences do not typically flow the way we would converse with each other. So continue to be wide-eyed to these scams and know if something sounds too good to be true, and it is. But the Craigslist has increased significantly and people are still falling victim to it. As the city manager mentioned, he touched on the SRO agreement. We did Monday as promised, well, I don't know if we promised it, but that was our goal to get a police officer in the school April 30th. We now have wonderful time officer at the high school, one at the middle school, Tim Lamping. He started at the middle school on Monday and they are rotating back and forth elementary. And we do have our police officers taking care of traffic control in the morning. So our SROs are in the school and they're frequenting the other schools. They're, they're developing better relations than we ever have, in my opinion. And that's going to be the goal and expectation for our police department, making better partnerships with the schools and the community and working together. So I applaud the school for participating. We're very comfortable with where we're at in that situation with that.
Chief, do we do anything with the MCC TC?
Yeah, we have one full-time police officer in the MCC TC. And similar to the agreement with Campfield, they fund that police officer salary for the nine months that they're in the school.
Great.
So yeah, technically our agency has three school resource officers, one at MCC TC and two at Campfield Local Schools.
Great. Counselor, I didn't mean to skip over you, but I wanted you last.
So we had, you've heard the city manager and the chief talk about the SRO agreements with the township and with the board, two separate agreements. Those have been finalized from my end, out to the school board and we'll see what happens on their end. My end, working on two new agreements, Cardinal Joint Fire District as well, relative to the lease and the dispatch services. I got all the feedback on the mobile food truck ordinance. I'll be revising that for your consideration, probably send it to you prior to a meeting so we don't have to engage in a lot of back and forth at a meeting. If you have any questions, you can call me. You'll see that before it's on an agenda, okay? Charter Review Commission, I think I reported last time doing very well. We'll meet, we got our next again. We're probably about two thirds of the way through. They're really working hard and really doing a good job, in my opinion. And the date of the Kalen hearing is June 5th at 8:30 AM in Judge Durkin's courtroom. That's June 5th, 2018, 8:30 AM, Judge Durkin's courtroom.
Is that, did that's downtown your city?
Yes, in Monique County Public Police Courthouse.
Any questions you guys have for any of our reports? Okay, hearing none. At this time, I entertain public comments only dealing with these reports. And please keep your comments brief, three minutes if you would. Take the podium, name, address. Thank you.
Catherine Young, 570 Barcliff Drive. And this is mainly because Mr. Tish isn't here and he's the head of the park. So it's really not a question, but it's also additional information because what was brought up yesterday, just, there's like four things. One is congratulations for 37 years of being Tree City and being Arbor Day. Number two was the community garden. They talked about having it at the ice skating rink at Fair Park, but Mr. Tish wanted to make sure that the community, it was an interest. So if you are interested, especially like that retirement home is along there or that community or anybody, they're going to, the dream is to build raised beds in the ice skating rink, put a fence around or whatever, but there has to be shown that there's interest. So whether it's on Facebook, your social media that you're starting or whatever, or maybe just all those letters to Mr. Tish. And the farmer's market has been, we talked about it and once a month, starting perhaps in July is, would be the kickoff date. And Thor's Got a Tree. So, and they have like that area that they're designated for that, which is going to be pretty cool. So just wanted to.
Thank you, Catherine. I would also like to thank Ms. Young. She actually represented the city at the annual Arbor Day celebration that recognizes Campfield as a tree city. Prior months, part board meeting, all the members weren't able to attend that ceremony. Ms. Young volunteered to attend that ceremony on behalf of the city of Campfield. So I'd like to recognize her as well.
Thank you, Catherine.
Good evening, Franklin Kier, 220 Vanview. Now, if we go to the SROs, we first need a little bit. The SROs are at the schools, say the high school and the middle school for nine months of the year. And three, the other three months, is the city taking up their wages?
Yes.
I'm just wondering myself, there's a lot of activities at the schools during the summer periods.
Yes.
Why is there not SRO all year long? There are a lot of students there, doing a lot of activities. Are we not being missed and not providing full use coverage?
That's a good point. And yeah, and we do participate in the, so when the, you know, the administrators are in the school buildings during the summer, our people are often in there, working together with them, planning, training or planning, whatever the events are going to be throughout the 18, 19 school year, the following school year. So they are in there. If there are events at the schools, we're stocked in there. But the, the SROs remain active with the schools throughout the summer and the school will definitely acknowledge that.
And as part of the negotiations and the SRO agreements, those topics were discussed. And I think we mutually agreed for the most part, nine months is the service that they're providing specifically to the school from an auxiliary standpoint during the summer. We do still provide service to the school, but the majority of their work is done within the community, which obviously encompasses the school. So the commitment right now is for that nine-month salary being 100% funded by Campfield Local School District for one of the officers. And in the current agreement we have in place with the township to share the cost of the other SROs. So the township picks up half of the nine-month salary of one of the other SROs.
My point is, why are we not giving it full 12 months coverage? There are activities and there are students at those schools. You may, you may do it, I, first we want to, we've had somebody there part-time. Should we not cover that full-time?
We, again, we had talked about that with the school district mutually between chief, myself, school administrators and board members mutually agree to the agreement that we have in principle that we're presenting to all of our boards.
I understand that. And maybe we're not going to resolve that here. And the school board is going to be involved in it, of course. I think the city ought to be supportive of the full coverage and I welcome to trust that school board myself.
Just to address that, August 1st, all the fall sports go into play and it might be worth looking because that's always crowded outside with football, cross-country. You know, July, a little less, but once all the summer sports are done and then all those athletes come back in August, there's a lot of kids outside, a lot of teams that are training, plus the weight room. It might be, might be something after we get this contract signed, not to break up the contract, but might be something to get one of our off-duty police officers, security or something. Because it is, have we coached up there? There's a ton of kids up there, thousands. You know, and all the scrimmages and everything else. So just.
And just one more point, I still think what we miss, not necessarily the city, but the city and the Board of Education and not covering, not providing SROs into grade schools full-time. If I'm not mistaken, many of these incidents have taken place in grade schools and we're not covering it. I would certainly like to see us do that. I'll be personally pushing for it, for it at the school board. Give me some help.
You know, you know that I am in full support of that as well.
Thank you. Let's get it done.
Thanks, Catherine. Is there anybody else who would like to address just these boards' reports that we just heard? Okay, hearing none. At this time, I would ask anybody desiring to appear before council, please keep your comments brief, three minutes. And if you would go to the podium, state your name, address for the record. Catherine, I have you on my list.
Catherine Young, 570 Barcliff Drive. Due to time constraints, I'd appreciate if you'd comment and the answers to my questions that are on my sheet here are held to the end because we have three minutes. My concern was about the honeybee because you're passing the law today. So remember Einstein's quote, "If the bee disappeared off the face of the earth, man would have only four years left to live." As a community, we should be grateful for any citizen trying to keep the honeybee alive for all of our cities. Referring to section three, just to be passed today, what constitutes an ordinance to be an emergency? How many people does it take to complain to declare, to be declared an emergency? I have 50 signatures and counting of concerned citizens who would like the bee ordinance revoked. You have cited peace, health and safety. I Googled the threat of honeybees to humans and found nothing. I Googled the threat to honeybees, oh, excuse me. In fact, the response was so overwhelming, the threat was to the honeybee, not the humans. Why does this ordinance need to be passed so quickly in an emergency state? How many applicants have approached the city to have hives this year? How many of these fall under the grandfathered-in clause quoted in two separate newspapers and told to me last year by the zoning manager the very first day I stepped into this building? Why was the grandfather clause not included in the original ordinance, yet clearly conveyed at least twice to the general public through media? Does grandfathered-in mean the same as it did for the churches and businesses who did not have to pay the ongoing permit fee for their signs because they were grandfathered-in? The definition for grandfathered-in clause refers to legislation provisions that permits an exemption based upon a pre-existing condition. My suggestion is to table this ordinance, just like Mr. Tish was allowed to table the increase in the cemetery fees until those who are to be grandfathered-in are identified and the clarity of the definition is determined. May I also state that the city of Campfield will receive far more in return than the $5 yearly fee should they allow those that are grandfathered-in to serve as teachers and mentors to those wishing to become beekeepers within the city. Properly worded, it could be a win-win situation.
Catherine. So last year, we passed this ordinance for the control of the bee hives in Campfield. This ordinance is only to put a fee on those applying. So that's all this ordinance is doing this evening is just putting that fee so that we can process that paperwork. The ordinance has been passed last year for the control of that, of the bees. Now, could we have discussion about it? Absolutely. You know, could we resent it? Absolutely. What we're doing this evening is passing a fee to process the paperwork.
Well, just like Mr. Tish was able to, what did he do where he used? Table something.
He didn't, he didn't.
He tabled it because there was an increase going on in the cemetery and he wanted to make sure all the people that were involved could, could.
Right.
Let's get to the emergency issue. The reason this is an emergency is people are coming in, starting to come in to get a permit and we don't have a fee established for that. Okay, and that requires Mike to do some inspections of the hives, requires some paperwork to be processed. So we've set a nominal fee of $5. We can't charge a fee or establish the permit process completely until this legislation is passed. So we've declared it an emergency because if we don't declare it an emergency, it takes 30 days to become effective and people want their permits. They want to process the permits. We can't do that unless this legislation is passed.
So going back to how many have approached the office?
One, one right now.
One. Was he grandfathered-in?
No. New hive.
New hive. So is it possible to add to this ordinance what the definition of grandfathered-in was? Because you did use it quite.
Not here, I want to add it here. We've talked about it administratively.
So would those grandfathered-ins still have to be paying permit fees yearly when you have other situations where grandfathered-in means something totally different?
My opinion is they would have to pay that $5 permit fee. Mike should be looking at these on an annual basis to make sure they comply. That's a process that costs the city money. The paperwork costs the city money and we're charging a nominal fee of $5, which is what the state of Ohio charges.
Right. But the definition of grandfathered-in refers to legislation provisions that permits an exemption based on pre-existing conditions. So you could exempt.
That's not my advice.
And the ordinance, the ordinance for consideration tonight, again, to reiterate President Morve's comments, is to establish a fee. You have 50 signatures petitioning some sort of amendment to the ordinance as it written. We would welcome that be presented to the city so that if, if there's amendments to the ordinance that relate to this specifically, the ordinance and the regulations, we would welcome that. The action on the table this evening specifically is a fee establishment for the bee hive permit within the city of Campfield based on the regulations that were passed last year.
With the regulations passed last year, you had mentioned a grandfathered-in that you never put into the ordinance yet. In two newspapers, it was clearly stated that there'd be a grandfathered-in clause. So you think that you would have defined that and put that into the original one before you start setting fees?
I agree with city manager. If you want to address amending that ordinance passed last year, bring something forward. We'll consider it.
So why wouldn't you consider the permit fees just for the new hive keepers that have never?
It's an annual inspection. It's an annual requirement. Mike needs to go out there and make sure that these things are in compliance with the statute that we passed last year. That costs the city money. City has taught us to recoup a little bit of that money and Fox barely gets that done, right?
And it's a separate ordinance. So this, this ordinance is not addressing or changing anything in the ordinance that was passed last year. This ordinance establishes a permit fee for individuals within the community that want to comply with the legislation that was passed last year and established that $5 fee again to process paperwork. And it's Mike's time accounted for in regulating bee hives within the city. So again, if you have specific comments, questions, concerns related to the $5 fee, I believe we'll entertain those. In terms of actual substance in the ordinance that was passed last year, that's not what this ordinance does, nor are we addressing that this evening. So if you have a petition that you would like to present to the city and the city council, we will welcome that. But I don't think we'll engage in any more discussion this evening regarding the ordinance changes in the legislation that was passed in 2017.
Okay, so this is a separate ordinance and it's establishing a permit fee. And as a beekeeper who is grandfathered-in, I would like to say that I believe that the ones that are grandfathered-in should not have to pay, just like the churches and the businesses that have signs are grandfathered-in.
If you would like to sit down with myself and Mike outside of a public forum to discuss specific permit regulations.
This is for, this is a discussion.
Not, not this agenda item, no. I mean, if you have specific questions regarding city operations, permitting fees, I would welcome you to sit down. Bruce Knapp I mentioned, he had a question, comment, concern from a resident on a silver backup. Funnel that to me and we will address it. Public comments are made for specifically the legislation that's on the table and we welcome that. However, if we're getting into operational issues and details, I would request just from a professional standpoint, that those be addressed in my office with the appropriate staff.
Okay, and definitions as well? Definitions?
All things we can talk about.
Thank you, Catherine. Larry Ely.
I'm thinking of, fun to be the mayor. Hug around for you, I was there earlier.
State your name and address for the record.
Oh, yes, sir. I'll give you a big one out. Can't keep running to you everywhere.
State your name.
Over here? My name is Larry Ely from Dayton, Ohio. I was there at the prior meeting.
Commissioners meeting.
The commissioners' meeting.
Commissioners meeting. Saw on the internet, let's see, I'll be driving down here, so announced that I am running for governor for Ohio. And as, as y'all, most of y'all know, they, they posted I'm a former exotic dancer. Associated Press did all this. I haven't been a dancer in 25 years. So, they go wait till I run for governor, 30 years later, to break it out. So, but, but, but I never imagined I'd be running for governor in 2018, when, when I was 23 years old. But, you know, we never know what we're gonna do in life. You just got to keep pushing. You know, we, we started on our own way, we wound up on some other way. And, you know, we become council members, firemen, police, or whatever. But, you know, and one point that's funny, Rob, about the school shootings and school protection, I think the state really need to beef up the public service schools because we, because we see what's happening. I mean, it's, it's a trend going around. You know, the, we'll be shooting just waiting on the opportunity. As soon as they see that one space, I think they're gonna take it. So, I think we need to focus on, on that issue, just, just everybody, the community, the state senate, county, city. As, as governor, I, I want to make sure students are, are just able to go to school to get in and get out of there. And one other thing I, I want to do, I've been thinking about with the youth works, is to take some of the youth work program and extend it for four years straight, all year round. That way, I believe we'll see crime drop. I specifically want to pay attention to the inner-city problems. I want people to take a, take a real good look at it and, and go in there and walk off-duty one day. Just drive through, go to a store or something. Get a feel of what's happening there, and if you come back home, maybe you can see, well, man, I see some things today I think we, we're gonna need to address. And I think once we take care of our inner problems, I think, I think everything else will start moving. So, I got a lot of the things I want to do. I, I want to have an open, an open government. People can come in from all walks of life, no matter where you've been. Always remember one thing in life, a closed mouth don't get fed. So, you got to speak up to homeless people, to poor people. Well, we got a job to protect them too. And, and I want to end the homeless population. I'm gonna end the housing problems. I'm gonna end the welfare problems. When I was growing up in the 1963 and through 70, my mother never, never wore on welfare. You know, and I just realized that, like, we, we was not on welfare. My father had three jobs, come from the backwoods of Carthage, Mississippi. And so, I think we can come together and just come up with simple plans. And I think we can work through all our communities and make everybody as one. So, I really enjoy myself coming down here, nice people. Now, I'm trying to find me a big sandwich somewhere while I get out of here. So, everybody come out and vote. Man, hey, don't, don't, no matter who you vote for, let these people know that there's work to be done. If you put a politician in office, make them accountable. Make them do, do what they said they was gonna do before you cash your vote for them. Because most of them just get in office and just vanish. And then we down here complaining to our local council, whether it's the state people who, who have the responsibility. All right, y'all have a good day, and let's hope it don't rain no more.
Very. Good luck to you.
Thanks, y'all. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
There's a good restaurant right up here, Larry. Broad Street Diner.
How many miles?
One. Yeah, go south, on your right.
Go faster.
I haven't missed too many meals, so.
I know. I'll be back. And always found me in America to talk to in some city.
Valley Napoli has some good sandwiches and things too, and it's right in Giant Eagle Plaza.
Okay. Thanks, y'all.
All right, thanks, Larry. At this time, I would ask for any old business. I don't think, I don't believe we have any old business, so we'll move into new business. And first is an ordinance, as per the provisions of Section 4.05 of the Charter of the City of Campfield, I move that council dispense with the requirement of two readings of the proposed ordinance and authorized adoption of the same upon its first reading, and I make a motion. Do I have a second?
Which ordinance?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I need a second. I need a second.
Second.
Second, Mrs. Oliver. Thank you. Patty?
Mr. Duffett?
Yes.
Mr. Morve?
Yes.
Mr. Knapp?
Yes.
Mrs. Oliver?
Yes.
Okay. So, as per the provisions of Section 4.05 of the Charter of the City of Campfield, I move that council dispense with the requirement of a full reading of the proposed ordinance and authorized reading by title only. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Oliver. Thank you. Patty?
Mr. Duffett?
Yes.
Mr. Morve?
Yes.
Mr. Knapp?
Yes.
Mrs. Oliver?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. All right, Mr. President, I have an ordinance establishing a fee for bee hives and to declare said ordinance's emergency. I move for passage. I have a motion. Do I have a second? Second. Mr. Mayor Duffett. And again, for discussion, this is only to set a fee for those permits that are coming in to be issued, right, Mike? And you say you have one right now. And it is an emergency so that this fella can, or this gal can put her bee hive in place. I'd ask for any public comments. Kathryn, if you'd want to comment again.
I would request at the council table, as I've said before, I mean, you have one person that come in. It's not an emergency. It's not something that can't wait for two more weeks until the next meeting, until it's discussed. It just seems like we have these emergencies, and we have to pass legislation, and once you pass it, you can't take it back.
Well, sure you can.
Or, or sure, by, by walking door to door, which.
No, you can rescind it. I mean, council can rescind it.
Yeah.
So, at any time, you could rescind the bee bill.
And, and that's gonna be your discussion with the city manager.
But it's really you guys, because you guys have to decide. You guys have to discuss it in the back, you know, whatever.
We don't discuss anything in the back.
No.
I've never, we don't discuss anything in the back.
Yeah. Where's the back? I don't know where that is.
What's the Tuesday meetings? Is that like a council meeting?
We're not all here. We have a staff meeting Tuesday mornings at 8:30, 8:00 AM, which is specifically staff. Not one individual that sits on this council attends those meetings, or nor do they discuss city business.
I saw specifically an internal meeting that we have among staff members.
And one of the things we covered at this last meeting was design review committee, certain members of the design review committee and other members in the community want beekeepers to have to get approval for fencing that they put around and go through the committees and request variances. And we discussed that Tuesday and thought that was ridiculous, given the nature of the hives, et cetera. So, it's not like we're coming against the beekeepers here. It's a $5 fee to allow inspection and some paperwork to be processed. That's all it is.
And, and Mr. Yod, just to tell you, we get this ordinance, these ordinances emailed to me, they're us, there's no discussion. There's no discussion. We discussed this here prior. We're not, the council is not at these meetings. I think everybody here works during the day. So, there's no pre-meeting, hey, what do you think of the bee thing? I learned about this when I got my email on it, and then I read everything about it, and then the discussion's gonna come here, and the vote is gonna come here. I understand you don't want to pay five bucks for the, for the thing, but with what is said here, I know I'm gonna vote yes, because people are gonna be coming in to want to get their bee hive going.
A properly kept bee hive that you're registering in the state of Ohio anyways. So, it's not like if you're just setting up a hive, and there you go. There's a responsible way to do that, and that's what most people that are grandfathered-in, you know, they belong to that.
And this process also allows us to track and regulate bee hives within the city, much like the state of Ohio does, in requiring a registration and permit fee so they can track what's taking place in the entire state of Ohio. So, it's no different than what the state is doing in requiring registration and charging a fee to maintain and regulate bee hives within our jurisdiction.
The reason the state does that is they send on an inspector, and for $5, they'll inspect your hives and tell you what diseases are in them and all that.
And while I went for the state, I went for the city of Campfield. This ordinance establishes a fee for legislation that was passed prior to this meeting. So, our job as administrators, and Mike's job as the zoning inspector, is to enforce legislation that the governing body of this city passed in 2017. In order to do that, in order to do our jobs, we have to pass an ordinance establishing a fee for a resident who wants to comply with an ordinance that our governing body passed, and that nominal fee is $5. That's what this ordinance does. Anything outside of that discussion, again, I would welcome the conversation between yourself, myself, Mike, our zoning inspector, to take place for operations within the city. If you'd like to present a petition from like-minded individuals that want to change an ordinance, whether it's this ordinance or any ordinance within the city, Mr. McKea can walk you through the proper process to do that.
For this whole door, just like having to change a term.
For the sake of time, for, for specific questions, comments, concerns about the $5 fee itself, we will entertain it. However, if it deals with any other regulation within the ordinance itself, there's another time to address those.
Till next meeting, so that this discussion could be.
Request has been heard by the council. Thank you.
Thanks, Kathryn. Patty?
Mr. Duffett?
We're voting on the ordinance, so, yes.
Mr. Morve?
Yes.
Mr. Knapp?
Yes.
Mrs. Oliver?
Yes.
It's 2018-10.
Thank you. Okay. This is B. As per the provisions of Section 4.05 of the Charter of the City of Campfield, I move that council dispense with the requirement of two readings of the proposed ordinance and authorized adoption of the same upon its first reading. I'd like a second.
Second.
Second, Mrs. Oliver. Patty?
Mr. Duffett?
Yes.
Mr. Morve?
Yes.
Mr. Knapp?
No.
Mrs. Oliver?
Yes.
As per the provisions of Section 4.05 of the Charter of the City of Campfield, I move that council dispense with the requirement of a full reading of the proposed ordinance and authorized reading by title only. Do I have a second? Second. Second, Mayor Duffett. Patty?
Mr. Duffett?
Yes.
Mr. Morve?
Yes.
Mr. Knapp?
No.
Mrs. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. President, I have an ordinance declaring surplus property and authorizing its disposal, and we move for passage.
Okay, I have a motion by Mrs. Oliver. Do I have a second? Second. Second, Mayor Duffett. Discussion. Chief, could you, or, I'm sorry, Wade, what is this, surplus property, and what are we doing with it?
Yeah, so, mayor and council, the first ordinance, so, the next three subsequent ordinances kind of all relate together. The first one is declaring surplus property and authorizing its, its proper disposal. So, from time to time, when certain vehicles and equipment are no longer useful to the city, we need to surplus those equipment or vehicles. In order to do that, we have to have council authorization to, one, declare those surplus, and then, two, authorize the disposal of those items. The disposal of those items are typically done through auction, trade-in, or just flat-out throw them in the trash because they're not useful. So, the first ordinance is simply just declaring the ordinance, allowing us to surplus the property and authorizing the disposal. Within the ordinance, you will see the items that we're disposing. We have three police vehicles, one of our public works vehicles, an international dump truck, lawnmower, a John Deere tractor backhoe, upright vertical lift, and then a Ford New Holland tractor with a mowing deck that will all be surplus and then disposed of in terms of either sold outright in an auction or being reused as a trade-in as part of the next two ordinances that we will address. Thank you, Wade.
Bruce. Is there, Chuck, or Wade, maybe you know this, are the Cherokees, are they undercover vehicles?
One is.
One is?
One's a Mark Cruiser, one's a.
One is utilized as a K-9 vehicle, correct?
No. That's a different one. That was a.
One's a Mark, one's on a Mark.
Well, my vote of no actually should have been for the third issue. I have an issue I would like to discuss, and maybe you can change my mind, whether we should be buying another.
Could we do that, though, when we get to that?
Sure. But I wanted to clarify why I voted no on, on this, and that was it, because I'd like to discuss whether we should be buying another undercover vehicle. So, okay, that's it? Thank you. Thank you. Public comments, please. Hearing none. Patty?
Mr. Duffett?
Yes.
Mr. Morve?
Yes.
Mr. Knapp?
Yes.
Mrs. Oliver?
Yes. It's 2018-11.
Thank you. As per the provisions of Section 4.05 of the Charter of the City of Campfield, I move that council dispense with the requirement of two readings of the proposed ordinance and authorized adoption of the same upon its first reading. Do I have a second? Second. Mayor Duffett? Patty?
Mr. Duffett?
Yes.
Mr. Morve?
Yes.
Mr. Knapp?
Yes.
Mrs. Oliver?
Yes.
Okay. As per the provisions of Section 4.05 of the Charter of the City of Campfield, I move that council dispense with the requirement of a full reading of the proposed ordinance and authorized reading by title only. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Oliver?
Mr. Duffett?
Yes.
Mr. Morve?
Yes.
Mr. Knapp?
Yes.
Mrs. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. President, I have an ordinance authorizing the city manager to purchase a tractor and attachments. I move for passage.
I have a motion by Mayor Duffett. I need a second. Second by Mr. Knapp. Discussion. Wade, why are we buying this tractor?
Okay, so, as you remember, as part of the public works requests during the 2018 capital budget items, one of the requests was to purchase a, essentially, an upgraded tractor. The current John Deere tractor that y'all just authorized to surplus and dispose of is a 2000 series tractor, which doesn't, is it large enough to do loading salt into the larger dump trucks, getting into certain areas and provide for digging and all the different functionality that requires our public works department to operate under. So, as part of the disposal, that 2000 series John Deere tractor is being traded in on a 3000 series John Deere tractor with attachments, backhoe, and I believe bucket, to allow them to now have two backhoe tractors. Currently, we have one. In the instance, back in February, remember, we had two water main breaks occurring at the exact same time. With only one backhoe, you can only dig one hole at a time. This will allow us to essentially load salt into dump trucks or fix two water main breaks simultaneously. So, as part of the agenda item in front of you, the tractor is being purchased under the state cooperative bid purchasing agreements, which guarantee us basically the lowest bid price that we can give on any equipment or vehicle. And the, sorry, I just lost my train of thought. It's being purchased through the state cooperative purchasing agreement. This is coming directly from the manufacturer, John Deere. It's being delivered by, I believe, Agland Associates.
Elder Ag.
Elder Ag, who just provides us with the delivery of the equipment, but we, we're not going through any third-party dealer to buy this. We're buying it straight from John Deere.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Mrs. Oliver.
You said we only have one right now?
We have two backhoes currently. We have one larger backhoe that we use for water main breaks and loading salt into our dump trucks. The smaller John Deere tractor that we just authorized the disposal of is a 2000 series, which we primarily use to cut the grass in the village green area around the cemeteries because it is a smaller backhoe. By upsizing, trading in and upsizing to a larger-sized John Deere backhoe, we'll be able to utilize that for everything we currently do with the John Deere, but also utilize it for other things that we can't use the current backhoe for.
Okay, I was asking, because it's only a 2014, so I was wondering how it's so, you know, so much different just four years later. So you're saying this one's a lot larger?
Yeah, so the current one is a 2000 series tractor, which is a smaller size, where the 3000 series tractor is a larger-sized tractor, has more capabilities. So it's, we're disposing of the equipment not because it's unusable or that it's reached its end of its useful life, it's just from a feasibility standpoint, we're essentially upgrading our equipment rather than outright buy the tractor, brand-new, I believe it was 34,000 or 28,000. We're utilizing the proceeds that we're giving from the trade-in to then not to exceed a price for this new tractor of approximately $17,000.
Thank you.
Counselor? Public comments? Hearing none, Patty?
Mr. Duffin?
Yes.
Mr. Morveg?
Yes.
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Mrs. Oliver?
Yes.
It's 2018-12.
Thank you. As per the provisions of Section 4.05 of the Charter of the City of Canfield, I move that council dispense with the requirement of two readings of the proposed ordinance and authorize adoption of the same upon its first reading. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mayor Duffin. Patty?
Mr. Duffin?
Yes.
Mr. Morveg?
Yes.
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Mrs. Oliver?
Yes.
As per the provisions of Section 4.05 of the Charter of the City of Canfield, I move that council dispense with the requirement of a full reading of the proposed ordinance and authorize reading by title only. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Neff? Patty?
Mr. Duffin?
Yes.
Mr. Morveg?
Yes.
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Mrs. Oliver?
Yes.
No, this is for the police vehicles?
Yeah.
No.
Yes. Mr. President, I have an ordinance authorizing the city manager to purchase police vehicles, and we move for passage.
I have a motion, I need a second.
I'll second.
Mayor Duffin. And discussion. So, is it possible to take the unmarked vehicle off our purchase until we have more discussion on this and evaluate it? Can you, or do you want to elaborate what...
Yeah, so as part, again, as part of the 2018 capital budget request items that came from our police department, we had a workshop, I believe in March, that the council unanimously approved those capital item, budget request items. Within those included, obviously, the public works items that were taking place this evening, as well as two police cruisers and one unmarked vehicle for our police department. Again, the same strategy being utilized, items being disposed of, surplus will be used either through auction or trade-in to bring down, bring in additional income to offset some of these costs. The reason why, again, we're going with the two police cruisers and one unmarked vehicle, Chief Calucci can speak to that, but as far as looking at allocating revenue or allocating this expense amongst different funds or utilizing the $38,000 that's being used to purchase this unmarked vehicle, it can't be done. This is coming out of the police levy fund that was passed by the community in 2016, and as part of that obligation to the citizens, I believe Chief Calucci and his police department promised that all the things that they included within that police levy included updating equipment and making sure that we're providing top-notch service to our residents. And some of the things we discussed internally about the unmarked vehicle itself was the tendency to always buy the same vehicles. We have police cruisers that are Dodge Chargers. With unmarked vehicles, Chief could probably allude to the fact that you don't want to keep using the same vehicles. So in evaluating that, we talked about looking at other vehicle options in terms of purchasing not just your standard police cruiser that everybody on the street knows is a unmarked police stop car. So in order to do that, we looked at different options, and that's the proposal you have in front of you.
Chief?
Yes, so part of that police levy was we thoroughly explained, you know, there's a lot of misconception, how many police cruisers we do have, how many unmarked cars we have, why do we have so many? And part of that proposal and the commitment to the community was to be completely honest how many police cars we have, how many unmarked cars we have. And one of the agreements that I made was we do have probably one extra unmarked car that we're willing to get rid of, and that was a vehicle that was actually forfeited to us. The majority of our unmarked cars have been paid with forfeited drug money. And in fact, this car here that we're looking at purchasing for this year, Chris?
We're using 5,000 each out of two different forfeiture funds.
Yeah, so muck cases that our officers worked and monies that we received from drug forfeiture cases, we're going to put towards this. So originally, we allocated $28,000 to be spent on this, knowing that we were going to use the drug forfeiture money. We would be using all the drug forfeiture money on our unmarked cars. It's kind of just become a habit of ours, something we like to give back to the community. However, that, the federal government has completely restricted how we receive drug forfeiture money. We don't get what we get. I used to have a fund over $200,000, $300,000. Wow. And we would buy our cruisers with our unmarked cars with. That money has shrunk dramatically, and it's got a lot to do with federal restructuring. So we're going to put as much as we can towards it, which is $10,000, $11,000. We were very upfront, honest with the community that we were going to replace two police cruisers, and our goal is to replace, you know, our three-to-five-year plan is on a vehicle rotation basis to replace an unmarked car every three years, is what we talked about, and that's our plan. And I also look at reducing that fleet by one. And that was a commitment I made to the community that I won't go back on. We've talked about it internally, and we're going to get by without one extra car. So as far as the vehicles that are being declared surplus, the cruiser has well over 100,000 miles, and these cars begin to cost us more money in service than they are worth, and we eventually could buy a new cruiser for what it would cost us in service throughout the year. The unmarked Jeep, hate showing my cards, but has a transmission issue and we're probably, you know, I don't know what I say, I hate to show my cards, what I'm saying is whoever's taking it over, they, I hope they know it's going in. I don't have a problem telling them that, but it's going to become a transmission problem for us that we're going to have to replace in the near future. Actually, there's another unmarked vehicle that's in worse condition body-wise, but will be cheaper to fix than fixing the transmission and the other one, so. But I do the best I can to give you the best dollar, you know, money. I don't want to make the, do whatever I can to maximize the tax dollars that we do use, and we certainly respect that whole process. Why we choose SUVs, the majority of police agencies are switching to SUVs. The Ford Explorers and the Chevy Tahens are utilized across the state. They are more money. We actually looked at going to those this year. We considered switching over to the SUVs, which a lot of departments have, but in a commitment to the community, we decided to save that extra bit of money and go back to the cars. If you look at the fire chief, the fire chief kind of sold me on this idea. He has that full-size SUV. That's his command post. So when we arrive on a crime scene, whether it be a, I don't want to say that, but whatever it may be, shoot, we had a murder down at Villager Apartments, and we needed a command post. We're working together with the FBI, the Ohio Bureau of Criminal Investigations, and the local task forces. We have to have a command post, and those big SUVs provide that. We have whiteboards. We need to know what people we have out, laptop computers assigning different people in different directions, and there's a lot going on. So we need that mobile command post, and I got that from the fire chief. That's something that's taught to us across the United States and something we actually take lessons on. So again, the commitment is to reduce that unmarked vehicle even with the purchase of this, but we're going to get rid of it. We have a car, one of our unmarks was a car that was in an accident and badly damaged, and it happened in Columbus, and we never got insurance money. I mean, we did everything we could, we never got the money to completely fix it right. So that fleet, a lot of those cars are working on 10 years old. I was asked last year, somebody thought we were driving a Cadillac Escalade. Why do we drive a Cadillac Escalade? We don't have a Cadillac Escalade. So, but they're all purchased at state purchase price, and, you know, I try and work and negotiate these deals similar to when I do my personal vehicles and trying to get the best value for the vehicle. So with the city, I'm confident we are attaining, possibly attaining, three new vehicles that are going to be worth far more than what we're paying for them. You and I couldn't go out personally and buy one of these cars for that price. So with that being said, I hope I answered your question. There's a lot there.
Yes, well, I completely, I support the Canfield police. I don't, I would like to see us hold off on this unmarked vehicle because who knows what's going to happen with drawing back from Lordstown? Are we going to have less income now? Do we have to tighten our belt? I took a pledge running for this office to try to run the city as efficiently as we can. I'm not saying that we couldn't come back to this and purchase it at the next session or after we take a closer look at it, but that's the only reason why I would vote against this at this time.
Chief, how many miles do we put on a cruiser each, on average, a cruiser? And then, how many miles do we put on this unmarked vehicle this year?
So, the unmarks don't get driven as much as the marked police cruisers do. The cruiser that we are trading in, I believe, has over 110,000 miles. I haven't been in it or seen or looked at that number, but I believe it's, you know, pushing 110,000 miles.
So what year is it?
2000, oh, 2011 Dodge Charger. The Jeep has over 100,000, it's a 2009, and the other Jeep is a 2010. So they're all, one's about a decade old, they're all pushing a decade old, and certainly from my perspective, I, you're entitled to that vote, I just remind you, we did make a commitment on the levy, and I think they're completely separate funds, correct?
Correct. These cars are being purchased from the police department operating levy fund?
Yes.
Which is based on the real estate tax values?
So that being...
Those effects would not have an impact on the police levy?
Right, it's not, they're not being purchased out of the general fund, they're being purchased out of the police department.
And yet, Wade, we're trying to address in the future, not tonight, but we're going to look to address funding a study to improve what's going to go into Red Gate or improve the economic development, the development of the downtown district. So that has not been funded in our, in the budget that we passed. So as of right now, we have no money for that.
Not as far, yeah, you're correct, not as far as doing any substantial studies or putting substantial amounts of money into economic development activities. The city of Youngstown will tell you, economic development activities can only be paid for out of the general fund. So currently in the general fund, we do not have specific line item funding for economic development initiatives. We are doing a lot of things, both internally with staff, Mike and I, Chief, Mayor and I, and I know Bruce, you have taken it upon yourself to also engage with some members of our Planning and Zoning Commission and members of our council in economic development activities. But as far as committing dollars for specific economic development-type activities in the general fund for 2019, no, we do not have earmarked dollars for economic development.
Nor, nor would we, if we saved and bought a lesser value vehicle, would we even have that money?
No. Because this is what we have. The police, by not purchasing an unmarked vehicle for $38,000, that does not open up $38,000 anywhere else within the city, other than specifically within the police department, which I think Chuck would constantly come back and say, I need to buy a vehicle. So tabling or removing this item will not change staff's recommendation, staff's request to purchase this vehicle. We may just wait next year and save $40,000 in the police levy fund this year, but again, I don't think that's prudent, given that we're going through the disposal and evaluation of various items around the city, vehicles, equipment. If we're engaged in that ongoing activity, this would kind of throw a wrench into that, and Chief Calucci would have to reallocate or reassess what that $38,000 would then be spent on.
Okay, well stated. I call a question. Okay, thank you. Public comment? Captain, please.
When you, when I saw what was going on today, I kind of went back in the minutes. In fact, you kind of stepped back into when the financial crisis was for Canfield, was back in 2015, when you guys went to the public or whatever. And here it says that the police department occupies 66% of the general fund budget, right? So we gave the levy passed and whatever went in there, if your budget was in the general fund before, wouldn't the general fund have like a surplus from not having to pay for these stuff?
Not necessarily, or reallocating those funds. So I believe 2016, there was also the initiative to increase property taxes. That initiative obviously failed, so there was other ways to then try to fund general fund activities. Part of that was the police levy. So that didn't create a surplus within the general fund. That allowed us to reallocate those monies to other departments within the city that have kind of buried the brunt of the economic crisis and distress that we felt from the city over the years, namely our public works department.
Yeah, we looked at it close, quite honestly, if that levy would not have passed, that money would not have been there, and we would have lost at least four officers, and, at a minimum, possibly more.
Probably more.
Without a doubt. And that was exactly how we portrayed it. And I was going to ask you this privately, but I'll ask you publicly. I have, I'm putting a board together that will review the police department's budget, and, not the entire budget, but the, what we use for the levy, and it's a, it's residence, so you can just objectively look at it, and I would like to invite you to be on that board if you consider, we can talk about it more.
How would you consider it?
Yeah, good.
And just, you know, as a, as a person, a citizen standing here, that because of the levy?
Yes.
You know, as an individual, my real estate taxes went up $500, and it's for the police levy.
Yes, I know, I understand.
So as a citizen, I'm saying spend it wisely, because...
Absolutely. Yeah, we, every, I mean, it's, we looked at it close. Before that levy passed, I respected that whole process more than I can even express, and my commitment was to form a community, a group from this community, to make sure we're spending it wisely, you know?
Yeah.
To look at it. And an entirely separate fund was created. Chris and I worked very closely, harder than we've ever worked together on a police budget to make sure that everything was done that we said was going to be done, and there were a lot of people that, you know, talked about shell game, hiding money during their, this was not the case. We just would have been short, we would have been short police, we would have definitely...
So...
It would have been, it would have been a reduced staff, without a question. That was the only way to truly overcome the lack of equipment that had.
I just was curious about whether that, you know, with the 66%, whether maybe some of that went into the general fund, kind of eased the pain, so.
No.
A little bit, but not, not completely. So, again, the residents voted down an income tax increase to help general fund for all activities in the city. The police levy passed, which tells me that the citizens were not comfortable just writing a blank check for everything. They were comfortable specifically earmarking dollars to be utilized by our police department. And I think Chief Calucci has done a wonderful job in this community and as chief of police that, when he came to me and basically presented his 2018 budget, I agreed with what he was asking for, asked him specific questions, and then we sat down with Chris as the ultimate purse string holder of the funds and make sure that all of it was feasible, and the police levy fund could support the activities that he was proposing for this year. So I contest the fact that Chief and Chris, just in my first year observance of budgeting within the city of Canfield, don't take any penny lightly that the citizens are paying to the city of Canfield.
And this, one last concern on step-down, is as the board, at this time, the, the income tax code got changed from like 18 pages to 55. Mr. Tisch kind of brought it up. As a citizen, it's just being forthright, it said we didn't get the taxes through the income tax, but the back doors that, you know, I know you need money, but it's the honest citizens about, you know, the penalties for zero returns coming in, that's kind of, you know, even on a state and federal, they don't charge penalties for zero tax difference.
All the changes on that income tax ordinance was based on what the state forced us to do. It was not our choice to change that at all.
Right.
That was, the governor and the state forced all the municipalities to change their ordinances to that. to that.
And had we not made those changes, we would not be able to collect an income tax in the city of Canfield. That was state law. None of that came from the city. Not one word of it.
Even the zero, $25?
None of it.
Wow.
Write a letter to your state representative.
Okay.
We're voting for a different one.
Yes, Phil Ralph, 161, go back to the chief. The unmarked car that's being replaced, it's seven-years-old, is that approximately it?
2009, right. It's a, yeah, 2000, so we have the, I don't know, a Jeep and a 2010.
2010, seven, eight-years-old. How, how often are they on the road? Are they on 24/7?
No car is on 24/7.
Okay, but that's what I'm asking, how many days a week is that car being used?
Oh, at least five, six days.
Five days a week. And then you mentioned something, that there was an unmarked car that you had in Columbus that was in an accident?
Yes.
Was that on official basis?
Absolutely.
And you weren't compensated for it? It was total?
The person didn't have insurance, and, I mean, it came down to whether we filed a civil suit or not against that person. We recovered some of the money. Yeah, we recovered.
The west side recovered.
You know, ultimately, it just, yeah, and I'm not the insurance person, but, you know, if you're in an accident, it's not your, it's not your fault, you want your insurance company to enable.
I just wanted to know, and I got my answer.
Yeah, it was files, it would have cost us more to file civil litigation.
Not a problem. I guess I got my answer, thank you.
Any other public comments? Had a hearing done, I'd ask for the vote.
Mr. Duffin?
Yes.
Mr. Morve?
Yes.
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Mrs. Oliver?
Yes.
2018-13.
Thank you. As per the provisions of Section 4.05 of the Charter of City of, City of Canfield, I move that council dispense with the requirement of two readings of the proposed resolution and authorize adoption of the same upon its first reading. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Neff, Patty.
Mr. Duffin?
Yes.
Mr. Morve?
Yes.
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Mrs. Oliver?
Yes.
As per the provisions of Section 4.05 of the Charter of the City of Canfield, I move that council dispense with the requirement of a full reading of the proposed resolution and authorized reading by title only. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Oliver. Patty?
Mr. Duffin?
Yes.
Mr. Morve?
Yes.
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Mrs. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Neff?
Mr. Chairman, I have a resolution authorizing the approval and support for, for the Ohio Department of Transportation's ODOT efforts for the development of state and US bicycle routes, and I move for passage.
I have a motion, I need a second. Second. Mayor Duffett.
Wade, just a brief... Yes, sir. So Mayor, Council, Ohio Department of Transportation, Department of Transportation is going through a kind of comprehensive project, both on the state and national level, of designating specific bike routes around the state of Ohio to be designated as state routes, bicycle routes, and then those will be recognized, hopefully in the future, on a national level of national bike routes, no different than what we have state routes and interstate routes with our freeway systems, with the ultimate goal to provide designated routes for bicyclists to travel through the state and to other states. So the resolution on the table puts the support behind this objective that ODOT is undertaking. The designated bicycle route that runs through the city of Canfield is the Mill Creek Metro Parks, sorry, Metro Parks Bike Trail. So there's no additional roadway designations, it doesn't take up any of our current public streets from the state or locally, it just designates essentially the Mill Creek Metro Parks Bike Trail as that state and federal bicycle route.
Great, thank you. Public comments?
I would like to make a comment. One of the big ideas that we had in the campaign, in campaigning was make Canfield one of the highest-rated bicycle path cities in the state. And I think that would be a big undertaking, but I think it'd be fun to look into that, to see how we could perhaps start with bike pathing to our parks, so that you can get around to all of Canfield's parks and places via a bicycle, and...
The levy designated here.
I don't know, I mean, if we look at the overall map and see where we could put specific bike paths, I think it'd be a great thing.
Yeah, I think this resolution allows us to show this community's support, and when we go to and have conversations with Eastgate and some of the regional planning grants that come through for alternative transportation methods, this is one step that we can take to show we are on board with establishing bicycle routes, both coming through the city of Canfield, as well as getting current vehicular traffic in the city of Canfield to explore alternative methods of transportation, bicycle, walking, whatever comes down the pipe in five years that we're gonna utilize to move in and around the community.
Absolutely. And we can have more bike officers and less unmarked cars?
Less unmarked cars. And I would fully commit, I would fully commit...
We could buy a lot of bikes.
Whatever, whatever we need, we could buy a lot more bikes. A lot more. But, you know, I cycle quite a bit, our school, or not our school, our bicycle officers cycle quite a bit, and we would be more than happy to help.
Well, if we get the downtown development going, then we could even have beat officers walk the beat.
Oh, yeah.
And the new entertainment district. Okay, thank you.
That's good. Okay. Hearing no other discussion, Patty, please.
Mr. Duffin?
Yes.
Mr. Morve?
Yes.
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Mrs. Oliver?
Yes.
2018-3.
Thank you. As per the provisions of Section 4.05 of the Charter of City of Canfield, I move that council dispense with the requirement of a full reading of the proposed motion and authorized reading by title only. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Oliver? Patty?
Mr. Duffin?
Yes.
Mr. Morve?
Yes.
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Mrs. Oliver?
Yes. Mr. President, I have a motion changing the dates of council meetings for the months of July and August pursuant to Section 3.09 of the Charter of the City of Canfield, and we move for passage.
I have a motion, I need a second. Second. Mr. Neff? And do we set the dates, or?
Yes. Oh, there are, okay. So the, the motion is changing the dates, or establishing the dates for July and August meetings. Customarily, we have two meetings per month for our charter for the months of July and August, where we have one meeting, we need to establish that, that meeting day. So the meeting days are July 18th, normal time, 5:30 PM for July regular council meetings, and then August, meeting day will be August 15th, same meeting time, 5:30 PM. So I know Councilmember Morve, you expressed you have grandchildren on the way, so we did our best to schedule our meeting times around, anticipate those grandbabies coming.
Thank you. Is that a school mayor's court? Do we get a break from defendants?
No, we still require you to work in those months.
Justice never sleeps here.
Harry and Patty?
Mr. Duffin?
Yes.
Mr. Morve?
Yes.
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Mrs. Oliver?
Yes.
2018-12.
Thank you. I'll ask for council member comments, and I'll start with Mr. Neff.
I would encourage everyone to, that might attend, so, planning and zoning tomorrow, as, and citizens to attend, we're gonna be, have a short agenda, but we will be discussing the downtown development district and what the benefits of training in the city. It's at 6:30, 6:30 tomorrow.
Great.
And it will be less than an hour.
Right, thank you, Mr. Neff. Mayor Duffett? It's great to see everybody here, and also especially some young Cardinals out there.
Yes.
Hopefully we didn't scare them off. Mrs. Oliver?
I just wanna say thank you for attending. I do look like this is some more things happening in Canfield, I have a great appreciation for art and music, and we have a little girl who's going to be singing in New York City this weekend.
All right. Tomorrow? I just, I'd just like to conclude, and I know Catherine, you brought this concern up, you know, that we meet behind closed doors, and there's this, you know, hidden agenda here. And there, there isn't, and I just, I encourage people to really understand and see what we do, and, and I think everyone here said, first of all, no, we never, and we don't. I get my packet, I call Wade, and the first thing I do, if I have questions or need more understanding, I get with Wade, and they do the same thing. None of these ordinances, motions, resolution this evening was discussed, I didn't discuss it with any of these people, and I don't think they discussed it. So, that perception, please...
There's nothing in your music library.
That is just, you know, when you're doing a public service, and you get those comments, they hurt, because we try to do what we think is the best for everybody, and there isn't this hidden agenda, and there isn't this collusion behind the scenes, and it's, these are probably the most professional people I've worked with, Christine and Mayor Duffett and Bruce, they came on this year, I was so impressed, because they came with their boots on, they did their homework, and they dug in, and they, right away, they understood, and got, you guys were up on speed with everything really quick, and I was impressed with that. And the questions that they ask, they, they fill, Wade, I'm always impressed with that. And there's always somebody that has a different opinion, and that's a good thing, because then it creates this thinking, we need a, another unmarked vehicle. So, I'd just like to say that, you know, that, please, understand what we do and give us a little bit of credit for what we do, and, and thank you for your involvement, I appreciate it. So, that's my comments, and with that, I'll adjourn for the night.